We first would like to say the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Pastor Mulberry will give us our invocation and then Ms. Grants will do the roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you once again for this day and certainly for this opportunity to come together. Thank you for how you blessed us throughout this day. You brought us together again at such a time as this. We pray, God, for your wisdom and your divine direction, your instructions and your purpose, that your plan, God, be suitable for this plan in order. We pray in the name of Jesus that you will give guidance, that you will give instructions in what to do and how to do what. And whatever you do with us and through us, we'll be mindful of who you are and give you praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Mulberry.
God bless you.
Roll call. Vice Chair Deloach.
Roll call, Vice Chair Deloach.
Here.
Mrs. Rawls. Mr. Wallace. Mrs. Owens. Noted for the record that, in case some of them didn't have their microphone on, Deloach, Rawls, Wallace, and Owens are all present. For the record, not present were Chase Barnes, Edie Wilson, and Ed Kilber.
Thank you. Any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the planning board with respect to any matter, considered at such meeting will need a record of proceedings and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. Any questions? Thank you. All righty. And have we read the minutes of the last meeting? And do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign? Thank you. All right. Public comment is available in person by calling three eight six two two nine oh one hundred, extension zero, or by using the YouTube live chat feature. Okay. So, as we get started, if you are here to make public comment, when you come up, you'll need to state your name and address for the record. And just depending on what's there, basically there's a three-minute time limit, but depending on what needs to be said or done, and the question and answer period can exceed that. All right. So, as we get started, PB Case two one dash zero eight and two one dash zero oh eight A. Are we ready?
Good afternoon. This is a request annexed to parcels. One on the northern parcel across the north of Building Avenue is approximately four point zero five acres. And the southern property that's south of Building Avenue is three point eight oh acres. The reason why it's two cases instead of one is because of the road separating the two. If they were to make adjacent to each other, they could have been more. Future land use map for, from Putnam County is urban service. They want to get it to the city of Palatka Industrial. Future land use and the rezone from Putnam County Light Industrial IL to the city of Palatka. Light industrial designation. This parcel's, if you look at the map, is basically surrounded by commercial industrial properties as an existing use in the county. Staff believes that the request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. And this would take two recommendations, one for PB twenty one oh eight to recommend, request annexed to four point oh five acre to be approved. Staff further recommends that the future land use be from Putnam County US Urban Service to Black Industrial also be approved. And staff recommends on the two thousand eight one Putnam County Industrial Light, Palatka's Light Industrial also be approved. The same recommendations are for PB twenty one oh eight A. Any questions by the board?
Heard a recommendation by staff. Board members, any questions?
Any public comment? Anybody up front?
Anybody up here have any comments at this point? Questions? Okay. So, on here, on behalf of the people that petitioned for this request, looks like there are none. So, any questions about anyone on the board? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve PB twenty one oh eight that staff recommended to annex the property, the four point oh five acres into the city, to be approved. Staff further recommends that the request to amend the future land use map from Putnam County Urban Services to City of Palatka Industrial to be approved. And the request to rezone Putnam County Industrial Light to the city of Palatka Light Industrial.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign? Okay. PB twenty one oh eight A, was that also in your?
Make a motion to approve the request to annex the three point eight acre property into the city to amend the future land use map from Putnam County Urban Services to Industrial and to rezone the Putnam County Industrial Light to City of Palatka Industrial Light.
Okay. I have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign? Motion passed. Okay. Next item on the agenda.
This is PB twenty one oh nine. It's a request for a large-scale comprehensive amendment on the one hundred sixty nine point nine acre parcel on Crystal Cove Drive, just east of the railroad tracks. They have a future land use change from industrial to residential high density and to change the zoning from C three, R three, and M one to PUD Plan Unit Development. The applicant is Charles Alfred. The agent is Carl Salafrio. This is, I don't know if you members were on the board when phase one of the RV park was approved. This is a continuation of that concept south of where the first one is and it's being constructed right now. The majority of the one hundred sixty nine point nine acres is wetlands and will not be disturbed. The property will have both cabins now on the site plan that I handed out to you. They're on the northern portion of the site plan now than they used to be different. And the RV park thing, they all fit inside. And there's a pool and clubhouse type thing. And I think there's also going to be a restaurant. Well, the restaurant's already there in phase one. It's just about ready to open up. Staff is recommending approval to amend the future land use from industrial to residential medium density. I don't I have high density up there, but I think it should be medium that deals with their density. And change the rezonings from M one, C three, commercial, and R three multifamily to PUD. There's a development agreement that is connected to this, and the site plan would also be a part of that development plan agreement. And that would become the zoning. Is there any questions by the board?
Okay.
The applicant is here. I believe he has some slides to show when it's his time.
I think Earl and I are the only ones that were here at the time that came through the first time. I think you and I were the only ones that were here when that came through the first time. Right, exactly. Okay. All right. So, anyone want to speak? Okay. What'd you say?
Excuse me. Could everybody turn on their microphones so I can hear you, please? This is Valeria Thomas. Sorry.
Okay. Again, Carl Salafrio, agent for the owner.
Thank you.
So, yes, this is a continuation of what we're calling Crystal Cove RV Park Phase One. This piece is just directly south of Crystal Cove Drive. It's about a hundred and seventy acre parcel. As John indicated, most of it is wetlands, about seventy-five percent to eighty percent wetlands. And I'm going to show you a few slides to show you what that looks like. Next slide. So, this is just an aerial shot, just giving you an idea how this all fits together. This is the marina right here. Top, which is not showing up. You can see it in the yellow background. Phase one is just to the west. That was approved about a year and a half ago for forty RV units. There is a connection, a road connection between the two, the marina and the RV park. They share a common entrance. If you can put your cursor on the top. Run on the cursor. Yeah, right there. So, that entrance basically allows you to go into the marina or into the RV park. There's another entrance, which I'll show you on another slide on the west side of phase one. The other thing that's notable is that the marina and the RV park phase one are all served by city water, sewer, gas, electric, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's all fully engaged. So, you can see kind of from this photograph, the majority of the kind of east side of this track that we're talking about, phase two, is pretty much wet. This is just a close-up of the marina property. What we have right now is we've redone the parking lot. We've redone the landscaping. Have a restaurant that's open, bars open. We have approximately forty so slips, some transient folks in there and some little boards. We also have two storage units. You can see on, kind of on the west side of this photograph, back-to-back storage units. This is the phase one. On the RV park, right now, we have the stormwater pond constructed. And we've constructed the, on the north boundary of the, of phase one, we have a one acre park overflow parking area for trailers, which is also constructed. That has its, so this, this is our site plan. It's got a water management district permit already. It's got permits from the city. So, the wet pond is existing in the corner here. And then that overflow parking that you see on the north side is cleared, and we're going to be putting rock in there and making a parking lot out of that for over. You can see the common entrances, one on the east side, one on the west side. The entrances were designed so that vehicles, RVs, could stack up into the site, so they're not stacked on the roadway. And that's going to be a similar design that you're going to see on the, on the southern extension of this. Next slide. So, this is the wetland delineation. We've already done the delineation. The Water Management District has come out once and checked it. They've got another site inspection scheduled for this month. The one small wetland that you see kind of on the west side of this photograph will be removed as part of the project, and that will be mitigated. It will be wetland mitigation done by preserving all of the rest of the wetlands. And the significant thing about the wetlands is that everything to the south there is the gin parcel, which is essentially already in conservation. So, it adds another hundred and ten acres to an existing conservation area. Go back to that slide real quick. The only other significant thing is there's a fairly significant drainage structure on the south side of the property, which actually crosses the railroad track. And you can see that trail end of the, over to the left a little bit, right there. And if we were to use that piece to the south of it, we're going to have to either bridge it or put a big culvert in to get from one side to the other.
Is that power lines that go between the two?
Yes.
Is that the clearing?
Yep, that's, that's a major transmission line, which we could get a permit to go underneath, but cannot use, obviously, for any kind of storage or. This is the land use existing. As, as John said, it's mostly industrial. Most of the uses around the property are commercial and industrial. There's car wash. There's several other businesses on the road. The major feature is, of course, the railroad that essentially borders the west side of the property and the transmission line that basically cuts it in half. So, this is a survey. We've already surveyed the property. The reason why there's a difference between what's on the property purchase website and what we surveyed is there's a submerged lands issue here. You have to actually show the eastern boundary of the property relative to the state of Florida sovereign submerged lands. So, that's why it's a smaller footprint than what originally would, would you'd see on the property purchase website. So, this is a, just a kind of a bubble plan. The developer's agreement, basically what we've, we've talked about is limiting this to less than two hundred RV sites, which we don't have a particular problem with because you can't, you're not going to be able to put RVs out of that footprint. Now, there might be some RV storage beyond the easement, beyond the utility easement on the other side of the easement towards the south. We've, we've kind of toyed around with that. I don't know that we're, we're solid on what we're going to do with that piece, but essentially trying to cluster everything on the north side with the cabins being closest to the road. So, folks can utilize the cabins and then get in their golf cart. And, you know, the idea is that the marina is the amenity essentially to this, to this piece, just like it is to phase one. The RV sites are fifty, seventy by fifty or seven?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, seventy by fifty. So, they're made to accommodate larger RVs.
What size were they?
I think they're seventy by fifty each. So, they're, they're developed for a larger RV. We will have a community building, clubhouse, pool. We do have a pool and a, and a small bathing house on phase one. But then on the marina side, we have restrooms and bathrooms and et cetera, et cetera. And you probably already know that there's a hotel there as well. So, there's plenty of amenity here for folks, which is the, kind of the strong point. The blue area you see on the side of that drawing is what we've set aside for stormwater. We've set aside about fifteen percent of the area for stormwater management. This is just a couple of shots of the existing marina. This is after we've completed the landscaping. We still have some lighting to do, but we painted and put in new concrete, et cetera, et cetera. I think we got a few more slides on that, on that second. This again, kind of showing more of the finished product on the marina side. So, new landscaping, new concrete, new paint, all new paving, all new lighting. These are actually the, there are eight RV sites on the marina side. So, total, once we're built out, will be eight plus forty plus two hundred. So, two hundred and forty-eight. This is trailer parking on the, just completed trailer parking on the marina side. These, this kind of a close-up. We're actually putting rock down on, on most of the RV sites. Actually, we did that most of today. Again, that's an RV site under construction. You can see the sewer pipe there on the, on the right-hand side of that picture. This is our office. We did the office, actually moved the office from one side of the facility to the other. We reconstructed the boat ramp, put all new concrete so that it was more usable. Another shot of the boat ramp. We have fuel at the marina. As you may or may not know, we have both diesel and gas boat rentals, so folks that have an RV can come and rent a boat if they want. Close up of some of our rental boats. This is the inside of the bar. Just a total redo on that as well.
It's, it's my fault, but could you pull that microphone a little closer to you?
Yeah, this is a picture just of the inside of the bar. Again, just a shot of the parking lot. All new pavement, bathrooms being reconstructed, paint, et cetera. Okay. Questions?
Any questions from anyone?
Have you started working out the details for your planned unit development with the city yet?
Yes. John sent over a, uh, a draft development order, developer's agreement. And for the most part, everything that he had in the developer's agreement, I agreed with. There was no disagreements with any of that. I mean, we want to be respectful of the site. This, this site is heavily treed. It's got a lot of wetlands, you know, we're cognizant of that. I mean, I'm an environmental scientist myself, um, you know, so I understand that there are constraints. We want to try to keep as much tree cover on the side as we can. There are some large oaks that, you know, we'll be marking and consistent with the city's ordinance.
Any questions from members of the board?
I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone that wishes to speak on this matter in the audience today? If you'll step to the, step to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Tricia St. John, and my address is actually in St. Johns County. But, um, my, I'm representing my family, the Turners. And the only question I have is, um, is there a buffer along the railroad right of way? I was trying to see on the, um, site plan. And I was just kind of curious how close the RV sites are to the actual railroad track and how wide the right of way is there.
One second.
You can.
Again, Carl Salafry, I believe the, uh, buffer on the railroad track side is, it's either twenty-five feet or fifty feet.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-five.
Yeah, I think.
I believe it was twenty-five in my math.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-five feet.
Any further questions or discussion?
It's going from C-three commercial and residential to a PUD. The PUD is for the RV sites?
Yeah, the PUD is for the RVs and the cabins.
The, the PUD is for the whole property, isn't it?
Well, the Marina that he was talking about in the phase one of the.
Marina's not part of this.
Right.
It's all of.
Everything that's south of the Crystal Cove Drive is what this is about.
It's, it's everything skeet had in there that.
Correct.
That's the planned unit development.
Yes.
And that's what we're talking about today.
Yeah, I didn't think of planned unit development as housing, not rental of cabins and bring your own RV. I just was clarifying that. No more questions.
Ms. Owens, you got any questions? Earl, you good?
Say again.
Are you good?
Am I through?
Do you want to go camping?
She's making funny remarks because she knows I can't hear her.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the future land use map from industrial to residential medium density. And to rezone from M-one light industrial, C-three commercial general, and R-three residential multifamily to PUD be approved and give the mayor authorization to sign the development agreement.
Make that with staff's recommendation. With, no, with staff's recommendations.
Correct.
Yes.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda.
This is KSPB twenty-one twelve. Uh, it's a request through annex approximately sixteen point nine one acres. Men the future land use, uh, map from Putnam County Urban Reserve to City of Placa Residential Medium Density and to rezone, uh, the, uh, property from Putnam County Agriculture, which is really not allowed in the zoning district or in the future land use category that the county has. Let's consider it a holding zone, uh, to City of Placa Residential Three. The property is located at sixty-one thirty-one Krill Avenue. The applicant is, uh, L. Wayne Garrett, and the agent is Thomas Morgan. Uh, this is a request for a large scale comp plan amendment on the sixteen point nine one acres, uh, just west of Davis Lake Road to, uh, uh, actually build, uh, apartments in six buildings, hundred and twenty-four units, hundred and forty-four units, whatever, six times twenty-four. And, uh, to locate in a, to get city of water and sewer. And the map shows it's right adjacent to, uh, the city on the west. The, uh, zoning on the property to the west is actually C-one commercial. Uh, there's a multifamily to the north and also commercial and the single family residences to the east. The uh, staff is recommending to, uh, approve the request to annex a sixteen point nine one acres. Staff further recommends that the request to amend the future land use map from Putnam County Rural Residential, uh, to City of Placa Residential Medium Density be approved. And staff recommends that the request, uh, to rezone the Putnam County, from Putnam County Agriculture to City of Placa Medium Density Residential Three be approved. Any questions by the board?
What all's allowed in R-three?
Apartments.
What all's allowed in R-three?
Apartment, buildings, you have multiple family residential.
Is that planned?
Yes. They plan on putting, uh, uh, market read apartments in there.
Any questions from any other staff? Members of the board? Is there one, anyone who would like to speak public?
Thirty-seven, three-eight-seven, Henry Smith Road, Hilliard, Florida, Brenton, Franklin. Thank you for sharing our information to the board. You're correct, there's six buildings, twenty-four units each, a three-story product market rate rent. It won't be subsidized or any PUD community. It would be straight market rent. The utilities, we're going to try to pull, if we're working with the city now, to pull utilities from Davis Lake Road. Put in a new lift station, which we will provide. And, and then also provide a utility easement to the adjoining property to the left, which is, um, the, where they was trying to do medical and residential to the left. We will provide them a utility easement as well for future development. Other than that, I think you hit everything on the head. Uh, any questions? I'll be glad to answer, as well as my partner, Tom.
What is the, um, how many floors are you guys going to have?
Three stories. Yes, ma'am. Six buildings, yep. Eight units per story. There will be a, uh, on-site amenities, as in a playground, a park, and some other recreational facilities.
Yeah.
It's well needed in Putnam County.
Yes, ma'am, from our studies as well. That's what we've found out. There is quite a need. We would like to see the people of Placa be able to stay in Placa instead of going to Jacksonville.
Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments from anyone in the audience?
Come on up.
Okay, come up to the, have to speak over.
Hi, can you also please state your name and address for the record?
Gladys Thomas, one-two-three Davis Lake Road. I'm buddied up to the back of that property. And I was trying to find out whether they'd be fenced in, locked in.
We will fence the property.
Okay.
There's a buffer too. This is a buffer distance from, from the lot line, so.
Thank you.
Just to follow up, uh, there is a privacy fence around the whole property. And like you said, there is a buffer and there, there, there won't be any traffic ingress or egress on Davis Lake Road. That will be off of Krill Avenue. The only thing we're pulling from Davis Lake will be utilities, but, uh, but no traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to annex the sixteen point nine one acre property into the city. And that we amend the future land use map from Putnam County Rural Residential to City of Placa Residential Medium Density to be approved.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second?
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign?
Next case is PB twenty-one fourteen, a request for a conditional use permit to allow a pub bar within three hundred feet of another business that, uh, sells alcohol at three-fourteen St. Johns Avenue. Uh, the applicant is Two Keys Investments LLC. John Key is here, uh, as a representative. Uh, this conditional use permit, uh, would allow a pub bar, which is already permitted in the, um, downtown business district river, river district. Uh, but there is another bar, uh, restaurant to within three hundred, uh, feet of the business. They need to get a conditional use permit. Staff believes that this is the kind of use that we want in that portion of, uh, of the downtown business district. And we're recommending that, uh, uh, the conditional use be approved. Or any question by the board?
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the board? Anyone to speak on this matter from the audience?
John Key, four-fifteen St. Johns Avenue, Placa, Florida. You know, you can, uh, if you ask someone to speak and they're a lawyer, they're going to speak. Uh, I want to thank the, uh, board. I want to thank the staff for all their, uh, help in, uh, moving this project forward. I do believe it'll be a good addition to downtown, uh, as far as the existing ordinance goes. I think there's some movement to, uh, do some sort of downtown overlay entertainment type district that, you know, would obviate the need for this in the future. But for now, I'm glad to, uh, do what I'm doing to try to get downtown moving up a little bit. And, uh, I'm here for questions if anyone has one.
See, then, do I have a motion?
Let me say something before we make.
Okay.
I, I would hope that there'll be some effort made to keep all the beer bottles off of, you know, you've got a couple of places there now that, uh, if you go by there morning after heavy night, there's beer bottles in all the planters and up and down the street, broken and.
I, I do believe.
You can't control it, but.
Well, we'll, we'll be serving, I think, a different demographic than, than some of the other establishments there. So, uh, yes, of course, of course. I want downtown to look nice.
And the parking will be in the city's parking lot behind it there?
Correct, as well as along St. Johns Avenue.
And there are enough handicap ramps there? Not ramps, but spots?
There is one directly behind. I'm not certain that there are any designated as such right on St. Johns Avenue. But the one, there is one in the city parking lot.
The reason I ask you, I'm getting jimped up and if I come there, I might need one.
I'm, I'm not far behind you. We might have to get two, so yes, I hear you. Well, we welcome you, sir. Thank you.
All right. Next item of business?
Um, for the record, this is my grant, ma'am, and the motion in a second to approve this conditional use application, please.
Make the motion to, uh, give the conditional use permit to allow the bar to go in within three hundred feet of another business sells alcohol.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carried. Okay, thanks for, when I walked out, I said, did we already do this one or not? And they wait for the motion in the second. I said, I've lost here. Okay. All right, here we go. Okay.
Next case is PB twenty-one fifteen, it's a request for a small scale comp plan amendment on a zero point one five acre parcel on the eleventh, on Eleventh Street, South of Carr, uh, from commercial, uh, to residential light and the future lane, future lane use in the zone from C-two, uh, commercial to R-one residential light. The applicant is Thomas and Cynthia Lewis. Uh, the agent is, uh, Brandy Ratliff. This is, uh, she represents a group that, uh, has a lofty goal of, uh, placing single family homes on, uh, most of the vacant lots in the city of Placa. And, uh, this one they're starting with is first, it's kind of in a commercial area, but, uh, it's never sold or been used for that purpose. There's, there's several lots around it that they, uh, are also vacant, that they're looking to, uh, do the same process to, but they wanted to see how this was going to go before they, before they started those. So, um, you can see where the property is located. It's, uh, it is a commercial area north of there. There's not really much development on this little block at all. Uh, there's a couple of other blocks down there that are the same way. Staff is recommending that the request to amend the future land use map from commercial to R-one load density is approved. And that the, uh, property be rezoned from C-two to R-one A. Are there any questions?
Eleventh Street ends right there?
Yep.
Is that what that's showing?
Yes.
And the property you said that was on Carr Street, right in front of that, on the corner of eleven and Carr, that property is?
It's a warehouse.
Matthews.
Matthews, yeah. The rest of the block is vacant.
Across the street that, to that on Eleventh Street, those are all residential, right?
Correct.
I've never driven down there.
Yep.
But we own commercial and we, we have a light industrial piece that's right there at eleven hundred Carr Street.
Yeah.
So all of there's residential, all right there.
There's a couple of houses in there, but I think most of it's vacant, isn't it?
Most of it's vacant.
And then you got the warehouse up to the north of it.
Right.
But then immediately to the east of it, you got a residence.
Right.
Is that right?
Yes.
Any further questions or comments by the board? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to amend the future land use map from commercial to residential load density. And request the rezoning from Putnam County Commercial Light C-two to residential single family R-one A to be approved as staff recommended.
A second?
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed by like sign? Okay.
The next issue is the, we brought back the lots bit policy procedure ordinance that we talked about last month, but our resident surveyor, Earl, provided us with some modifications.
I'm not a surveyor anymore.
Oh, you are in my book.
February 28th, I quit being a surveyor.
Okay, but we've addressed these issues and so hopefully everybody's happy with it now. We added the language he wanted, what we had, and then we added an exempt subdivision portion that he asked us to do, that basically resolves encroachments across property lines, settle boundary disputes, any conveyance or deed necessary to correct the error made in language earlier, a division of land by order of the quarter competent jurisdiction, and to adjust a property line between two agreeable property owners, so long as the density and setback required in the conference plan, then use development code are still met. So those are the exempt subdivision scenarios.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this?
Make a motion to approve for submitted to the City of Commission.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second?
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign?
Our next issue is also an ordinance amendment that we're proposing. We find, try to find ways to promote the downtown business district and the downtown riverfront district. One of the owners in the property had a gentleman that's on 17, almost adjacent to his property. The gentleman on 17 said he would be willing to put up a sign saying that, that he was there in the business district. Unfortunately, you can't do it right now, so we thought that he would try to promote that area that we should allow that to some extent. So we drafted up an ordinance that allows them in the downtown residential riverfront district and the downtown business district. It's an off-premise sign not to exceed 15 square feet in size. The off-premise sign shall be within a quarter mile of those two districts. Where they're located, off-premise sign shall not be electric unless the sign that they want to go on is already an electric sign for a business for the same premise of the sign, and they can change copy on it, and then the final thing is a sign permit that would be required. So it's pretty simple ordinance to try and help the downtown business district. Any questions by the board?
I don't have it in my book, I don't think.
You know?
Mr. Ross, it's on screen.
Um. The business that's requesting it is on River Street?
No, he's on St. John.
So the St. John businesses want to have off signage parking, or off signage, off.
They probably have an off-premise sign, yeah. Mainly there's.
They're still going to have to go by the sign ordinance of not being lit, and is it going to be picked up daily or not picked up?
Yeah, the rest of the sign ordinance would apply.
Yeah.
Limits the size of the sign, so it's a pretty small sign, three foot by five foot. Has to be within a quarter mile of the downtown business district or the downtown river district, so it can't be out on 19 somewhere. Mainly, it probably, they'd be locating on 17, would be my guess.
Okay.
This is going to take care of all the little odds and ends signs that we have downtown pointing up there and down here.
Hopefully.
Downtown.
Yep.
Museum, all of that.
Yeah, they can, they can do it legally better than.
It's going to put a restriction on 15 square feet.
Yep.
Just going to point them, so you're not going 45 miles past our downtown area. It's going to direct people in, you know, there's, nobody knows that the downtown is trying to build and it exists, and.
Yeah, I'm not against it.
It's like that.
You don't have.
It's like a launch ramp, it launches you right past downtown. So we've got to slow people down and get them over. Make a motion to approve the sign ordinance for off-premise signage. It's recommended by staff.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign?
And the last thing before you tonight is, we have received a request to put a tattoo parlor in the City of Palaca. Presently, they are not permitted in the city anywhere. That's a kind of a thing that comes back from the 60s and 70s when tattoos were considered to be nefarious, or people who may break the law were there and stuff, and now tattoos are pretty mainstream.
I thought we had one in the city. Up there by the county complex.
In that little strip mall, I think there was one there, I don't know if that, in the, in the, in the county city scenario on, on Krill Avenue, one may have that in the city, may not be in the city, I'm not sure, but there was one in there for a while.
It was in the strip mall.
Yeah, it was in the strip mall.
Seems like I've seen one somewhere else.
There was also one on the southeast corner of 15th and Ridge Street for a little while.
There you go. But they weren't, they technically weren't allowed, but now.
The old, the old Haitian, right, church thing, so, next to, okay.
Duncan?
They're not there?
Huh?
I don't think, I think they closed, yeah, I think that building's empty now, isn't it?
Say again?
I think that building's empty now, isn't it? I don't think.
I don't know, they're, they're, they still got signs out front, it's.
It's empty.
Black, black, black ink, something.
Yeah, it's, it's empty. All right.
I make a motion to approve allowing tattoo parlors in the City of Palaca.
Allowed by conditional use permit in the two districts, C2 and the, not the river district, but the downtown district is where they were allowing them, so.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign?
We have offered a young lady the planning position. So come next month, she may be here to save me.
We'll just go visit you.
Huh?
We'll just go to the county and visit you.
We'll miss you. Mr. Salmon's retired from the county, so I don't think you'll find him there either.
I offered to go back since Jim left, but I've not heard anything, so I don't know that anyone.
We appreciate very much your service to the City of Palaca.
Well, I, I enjoyed it. I have concern and love for this county and the city, and the reason why I get out of retirement every so often is because I think I can help get it better, so.
Very good.
We appreciate you.
Thanks.
Any other business to be conducted before this meeting? I'll say we're done. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Ms. Krantz, thank you very much for all the great stuff that you do for us. It is very well prepared and organized.